City Council Committee of the Whole meeting for Tuesday, June 12th. If we can all stand for our allegiance.
My honor, allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All councilmembers are present, minus Mr. Paul Burgley, and I guarantee you, he forgot about this meeting. That's what it is. Is he pulling up? Disregard. Paul Burgley has entered the building.
What an exciting time.
First discussion on the list is a T-21 discussion. Councilman Gordon, you brought this up again for us. We do have Tony here from... Tony, I'm gonna blank your company or...
Is that Tony Public Health Department?
Public Health Department.
It's the... There we go. I should've known that. It's the Public Health Department.
I'm not even going there.
Ms. Wood, you wanna take this, or do you wanna just have Tony step up and discuss this? What would you like, ma'am?
Thank you, Mayor Council. We're gonna ask if Tony step up to the mic, and he's gonna give just a background, just to make sure that everyone's on the same page of how this came to the county in T-21, just a very brief, about five, 10 minutes top history on this, and then we'll enter into some discussion.
Tony, if you don't mind stepping up, sir. Just make sure the mic is positioned so we can all hear you correctly.
Good afternoon. I'm Mayor Johnson in the City Council. And I'm Tony Butter, because we're away from my Sandy County Public Health. And I only brought 10 copies. I wasn't sure how many folks were gonna be here, but probably hand them out to the board and Jody first.
I know.
The rest, the rest of the whole room. I know you guys have a lot on your agenda, so I was asked to speak maybe five, 10 minutes on this issue. So I wanna try to give a quick snapshot. I probably got here today, and I'm already losing my time, but I have to look at my folder with my notes.
Time's up, Tony. Just sit down. I'm kidding.
All right. Yeah. It's not been a week. I'm kidding. All right. So really, the handouts I want to leave over is the one that looks kinda like this PowerPoint. I just pulled some of the slides out of the larger presentation that was given at other board meetings, council meetings. And to start off with, the Health Department does a community health assessment, we call it, once every three years. And the community health assessment is an opportunity for the county and partners to get together and do the assessment and see what are the top 10 issues that residents and partners care about going on in the community. So we did that assessment in 2017, and that's where some of this data started coming to light. So the top three issues that came to light were access to dental health, mental health, and the third one was youth, alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. So that's why we took a close look at tobacco data. From this community health assessment, we looked around, we say, what are the top three issues? And then we can't just drop it. We have to come up with a work plan to address those top three issues. The first two slides you see are some of the data that popped up during this assessment. So the Isani County last 30-day use of tobacco for 11th graders. You can see it's spread out between cigarettes, cigars, between tobacco, electronic, and hookah. There's data there from 2013 and 2016. This data's from the Minnesota Student Survey. So this survey's handed out to kids in eighth, ninth, and 11th grade every three years. And so the kids report their use on a whole array of issues. We just pulled up the tobacco ones. And the things that stuck out most right away were cigarette use. So our 11th graders were at about almost 90% cigarette use. The rest of 2013, they were only at 13%. The other one I'd point out is electronic cigarettes. Now, 2013, there wasn't a question about electronic cigarettes on the Minnesota Student Survey because they didn't really exist in like, in the public too much. So anyways, our rates were at about 30%. So that's about a third of the 11th graders were using e-cigarettes back in 2016. Now, giving you an update on that statistic, the Minnesota Student Survey was given out again in 2019, and some of the school districts started giving us back the results on that. And so our preliminary numbers showing for e-cigarettes is actually up to 50% of 11th graders. So in less than three years, we went from 30%, which was the highest in the state, and now we're at 50% usage of electronic cigarettes. You can see the next graph, all that just compares us with the rest of the state averages, and you can see we're twice as high with cigarette use and almost twice as high with e-cigarette use. On the back of that sheet, this last graph I'll talk about, shows the use of tobacco of all products. So it combines all tobacco products, compares by Sandy County 11th graders to the state average. And again, you can see we're high. So this, the community told us alcohol, tobacco were important for youth. The data supported that. Again, this is really good data because it comes from the kids themselves. So it's probably actually underreported to some degree. So we started working on this issue. You can see a timeline on the bottom of page two, and we did that community health assessment. The Health Department, you know, isn't the only stakeholder working on these topics. We brought this issue to our tobacco, our substance abuse prevention coalition. They said, hey, let's, let's look at this and work on this issue. From that group, we decided to do a couple of community forums. You can see the dates and the locations that we did those. Let's Smoke Out the Truth forums. We provided education, information. We also started asking residents, what do you want to do about this problem? And that's where T-21 started coming to discussion. We had the Isani one here over at the middle school. It was actually pretty well-attended by residents. I, for some reason, I remember it was the one we had the most elected officials at from different areas around the county, because that thing probably happened to work out. So that's where this T-21 thing first started coming to fruition. After that, in July and August, I invited city council and city officials to meet to discuss some of these findings and start talking about the possibility of T-21. September 2018, we presented information to the committee of the whole at the county. At that point, the coalition had over 800 local signatures of people that supported T-21. We had agency letters of support around T-21. If you look over to page three, the tabulacy, around October through January, again, we reached out to county and the local stakeholders. We had feedback sessions with social media to get what from residents again. And then January 29th, the county board looked at a draft version that our department and the attorney's office put together, requested some revisions, moved us up to March 20th. We actually had a public hearing, and ordinance passed, and then it took us back June 1st, 2019. The last couple of slides here, this is one of the slides we shared with the county board at the time, that there's an overwhelming support locally and across the state, nationally, across the country around T-21. At that point, we're at almost 900 signatures from local residents supporting the letters of support. And then they have these polls and surveys that go out, and they ask all adults, so it's a general survey, do you support the idea of T-21? And the survey results show that 75% adults supported, 70% of smokers supported, and even 65% of 18 to 24-year-olds support T-21. And that one probably surprised me the most. Last slide I'll talk about is on the back, and this just shows you who's passed T-21 in Minnesota between cities and counties. So that's a lot of information. I'm trying to boil it down.
T-21?
Tobacco 21. So T-21 is only looking at the purchase age of tobacco. So it's not a possession. So you could be 18, 19, and 20, still possess tobacco. It's just showing to be effective if you don't have sales available for 18, 19, and 21s for tobacco.
So this show that it can spell...
The biggest impact here is actually for the younger kids, because when 18-year-olds purchase tobacco, they're still in high school, and that is the number-one source. Where people younger than 18 get their tobacco from other students that are 18-year-olds. So if we cut down on the supply of 18-year-olds, cut down the supply of the kids younger than them, there hasn't been one study from the tobacco industry or health organization that showed less than a 20% reduction of tobacco initiation from those younger kids after you use this type of policy.
I think Councilman Gordon had a valid question, though, that if we're not making this county-wide forcibly, then we feel like we're competing with the city of Cambridge, because if we put it in place, all they have to do is go to Cambridge and buy it. So essentially, the 21-year-olds are not buying, or the 18-year-olds are not buying in the city of Isani. They just travel to Cambridge and get it.
Cambridge, Cambridge ported on a night. And passed it? They did not pass it.
Well, I mean, you can go statewide, too. If I'm in Isani, now I'm a smoker, and I'm 18 years old, it's on why I'm entering the area.
Right. So now, so now, we're essentially competing with Cambridge now, because we have T-21 in place, they don't.
We're not only competing for tobacco sales, but people who buy gas, they're buying tobacco, jobs, and a lot of things, and there are a lot of other things to do with gas stations and places like that, so.
And I guess my response for that, you know, initially, in your box, you might think that, but if you look at that list of cities that already passed it, there are cities that have a lot more concentration of convenience stores and are favored by other cities, and they haven't shut down businesses. They had repealed T-21, because the reality is, it doesn't happen as much as you might think. So we know from convenience stores for tobacco sales for that age group is only about 2% of their business. And so when I looked at the city of Isani, so stay with me here, this'll boil it down to why that doesn't probably happen. The city of Isani, population around 5,200, this is a census data, 18, 19, and 20-year-olds, you guys have a total of 152 altogether. You have 152 18, 19, and 20-year-olds. If we use the highest that I've seen actually use rate of tobacco, we'll say it's 20%. So if you take 20% of 152, you're talking about 30 kids. So you gotta remember, this doesn't impact everybody. It only impacts 18, 19, and 20-year-olds that currently use tobacco. And that number for the city of Isani is around 30. So I know initially, you might think it's another opportunity to lose business, but you start looking at numbers like this, you're talking about 30 kids that won't be able to buy tobacco in the city that could possibly drive someone else. This population doesn't buy household groceries. I have this population in my household. I've never had my 18-year-old go to the store, buy a pack of smokes, and come back with $100 worth of groceries. No, it doesn't happen. So that's why initially, I can understand, well, it's another opportunity to lose business, but the numbers aren't there to make that much of an impact.
Do you have any other questions, Councilman Gordon?
Yeah, I would just say, too, that, no, I mean, I know you say that, but it's not enough to make an impact, but there are people driving through town as well, that would, you know, maybe stop at one of the C stores that are here on 65, and maybe they'll, you know, go somewhere else. But, no, and I think you guys have done a great job, and I think it certainly, you know, it's hard to view on the facts. I mean, you guys, you guys have done good work, and I think it's certainly, you know, it's noble, noble endeavor, and I think that's all, you know, I'm not disagreeing with that. I think even the, even the businesses that sell tobacco, I think are okay with, with maybe 21. And I don't think that's, like you said, it's not that big of a part of their business, but, you know, and I think, is the county willing to go ahead and enforce it? You know, that's the moral of the question. I think that, you know, the businesses I've talked to, they're okay with, with that 21. But if the county's not gonna force it, then they don't wanna be put in a dismanaging Cambridge. They think it's well Cambridge to do anyway, or down to the border, you guys can't do much about that. But if it is the county, they have to stomach to enforce. What they feel is important. And if not, then I don't see a reason why we should be in a dismanage. That, depending on the business owner, I know a lot of you guys are in dwell, and I mean, every dollar that comes in for, regardless, only if you do it or not, it's still, still important, and all ends up.
And I think that's the point is, you know, we did have feedback with the businesses, and I didn't have one business, even after it was implemented, and we physically had to go back in the stores and say, here are some signs helping our business. Only they gave us a pushback and said they didn't like this idea, I need, I need a T-21. Only one comment I heard was, I wish that they passed it statewide or, or county-wide. But again, I think if they gave me the time to show, you know, some of this data, then maybe it would kinda, you know, calm them down. My favorite gas station in the whole county is Menonco. That's the one gas station I go to. I haven't seen a huge drop of people there in the morning. We don't wanna go, wanna go there, because it's a small proportion of your actual residents that this affects. But the consequences of not doing this, we know this works for sure. There's no debate about it. We don't get pushback from the tobacco industry or lobbyists or hospitality industry, because it works. We can expect a 20% reduction in youth tobacco use if we can implement this per city, per county throughout the state. The consequences of not doing this, we already went from 37% use, and the data we're looking at literally this week shows around 50%. So in action, not do anything, I think we're probably on this, we're gonna be on a curve till we hit whatever percentage that is, and then maybe both that now. But, you know, I understand that business owners are gonna be concerned whenever there's any kind of regulation, but I think this one's worth the city sticking with and moving forward. And I hope that the whole county does go T-21. From talking with the city of Brown, it sounds to me like it's favorable that they're gonna pass it regardless of the county does something or what about the state Cambridge does.
The only complaint, the only thing I don't complain, I know what you're putting at, but my only statement to that fact is, is a kid that's 18-years-old, he bought and gets sent to Iraq, gets shot and killed. He isn't even old enough to buy a pack of cigarettes. I believe a lot of that should go back to parenting. I smoke cigars myself. Do I want my kids, even older adults, to buy out of school? No.
Probably not, right?
That's their choice to make. You know, I don't drink, and I also feel the same way about alcohol use. If you're old enough to go to war and be shot and killed, do you understand what I'm getting at?
Yeah, you...
It's a very frustration level.
Yeah.
And do I think that we should stop some of this stuff from happening in schools? Absolutely. But then again, it all goes back to parenting that child or disciplinary action for that. You know, how many kids are 18 and are in school? I wasn't 18. I graduated just before I turned 18. So I was out there, you know. Wait, you can tell them it's okay for them to use, but you're not old enough to get it.
Yeah.
That's kinda what's gotten baffled in there. Don't get me wrong, I agree with what you're trying to do. I just think there's so many loopholes and jumps to get to that point to do that. You know, when I was old enough to drink, it was 18, and as soon as I, I turned 18, it was a few years afterwards, but as soon as I turned 18, you know, I was 19 or 21, that's when it jumped to 21. And I just felt that, you know, it's kinda targeted towards that kid to surrender service and fight for this country, and he's not old enough to buy a beer or buy a pack of cigarettes.
Right. And some people are gonna have that baseline value of age to serve in the military, and my dad was a disabled vet, and one of my best friends is 100% disabled combat vet, so I pay attention to that, too, but these are safeguards.
I get that.
You know, just like we all had to wear a seatbelt to come here today. Well, I'm 42, I should be able to decide whether I should wear a seatbelt or not for the greater of the community and protect us from ourselves sometimes. That's when these safeguards come into place in our...
Well, I don't really care if I wear a seatbelt, but if it's a hundred and sixty-seven-dollar fault, I know.
Our police chief isn't around here.
No, I wear my seatbelt. Correct.
But I hear what you're saying, but yeah, there's all sorts of safeguards based upon age, rental vehicle, the commercial driver's license, low interest rate, a hall of hazardous waste material, you have to be 21.
Something to dwell on, though, is sending somebody toward 18 is a relieved idea.
Well, but then that's a federal, that's a federal issue, and it's not our county's statewide issue. But it's just, it's just, I'm playing devil's advocate on this. You know, I, I agree with Commissioner Burton that, you know, we wanna bring businesses in town, or our, our businesses.
Same, yeah. Commissioner Burton.
Yeah. Councilman Burton, Daniel Battle, but it's, you know, I don't wanna stake businesses, and I don't, I wanna make this business from the area. But your numbers don't lie. I mean, plain and simple, they don't lie. But then again, I go back to that same thing, is now you're telling somebody, you will get shot and be killed, you know, buy a pack of cigarettes for a year.
Right. But you can't drive a rental car, but you can drive a team.
Yeah.
But the thing I would say is, the military is actually the most selective employers. Can't be too fat, can't be too skinny, can't have six figures. So the people that bring men are very responsible, and that can't be set for all the kids in that age group.
No, paint a basic, I just wanted to play devil's advocate, so you understand that, you know, there's, there's two sides to this point.
Right.
Any way you look at it. So, but anyway.
I just hope it's county enforced.
It just makes it easier for us.
That's one of my main questions. I think that the support is there, even from the businesses, and I think even, you know, I mean, these are local numbers that you're talking about here. You said for the, you know, the support of 21, but there, there are national numbers on that back page, right? And what's the, what's the current state average for, for e-cigarette use? You said 50% in town here. Do we know what the actual state average is? I mean, do we know if we're even higher?
We will soon, but we literally just got some of the school district data back on Monday, so I pulled our planner.
Okay. So that's great.
Pulled some.
Right.
And then maybe go up or down a little bit.
What would be interesting, too, is that we see less actual cigarettes being smoked as they're smoking more of the e-cigarettes.
That's already happened, yeah.
So, I mean, is that kind of a positive thing, maybe? But anyway, I mean, I, I think the support is there, but is the county gonna enforce it? I mean, I think you obviously don't know the answer to that, but I mean, do we, do we feel like that's something where the, the county's going to move forward on it?
Well, this, the city of Isani has done a great job with tobacco and tobacco enforcement. You guys are probably area standard. I think for that, you guys have already moved through this process of implementation, so that was probably the hardest piece. I can't speak for the county board or for the county attorney if they're gonna wanna move this board, because it does set us up immediately for implementation. But one of the statements I made last night for the city of Cambridge was, don't wait for somebody else to make your decision, but what happens, they can pass it. There's no guarantee the county's gonna pass it. So I really hope that you guys take what's already been implemented, and can be a good example. We need to see a right one, to maybe we can get to see a Cambridge back on page.
The city of Cambridge is a free city. Is there a main?
Well, I, I can't, I really couldn't tell you, because a lot of the stuff that I heard wasn't, I think, in all this, to be honest. And I think the papers were there, and they're probably doing a good job of taking those. One of them was kinda the same thing, if you're 18, we shouldn't tell you what to do. That was something I heard from councilwoman, if you're 18, then you should be able, we shouldn't tell an 18-year-old what to do. That's part of the city council's job. You know, I'm told what to do all the time, the papers are regular, from regulations.
Issue of Isani? I haven't told you what to do, no, too.
So that was, that was the one I...
I was just curious.
Well, appreciate your time, Tony.
Appreciate your time, Tony.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I'm always open to conversation in all the meetings, if you please.
And I will stand up for him on that, as I...
Yeah, I was saying, Tony was very helpful, and I spoke with him as well, and that's a good conversation, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number two, public works updates. Mr. Matt Sylvester.
Mayor Johnson, the council, I was asked to bring forth some of the things that public works has been doing. I just got some bullet points here, I'll just start with the streets, what's going on the streets. Got a new hot patch trailer, and it's made filling puddles way more efficient, getting the hole way more in hot patch than before. Staff has begun to pay the crossbars to stop barriers. This year, we're creating the corridor on its own area along the school crossing, burrow crossing, kind of the parade route type areas, we're creating this year. Staff has added gravel to unity parking lot. Street sweeping is complete for the first round. You may see it again on a rainy day later this week, definitely before Jubilee Days. On the sewer side, all air release valves have been flushed. We replaced one air release valve on Cogmont by 8th Avenue, Marpice. Water, harder flushing is complete, had one dirty water claim this year, a bit of flushing. Skid updates are complete, parlet upgrade, western solid transducer, our two-pack for the morgue well is there. Staff have been manually checking the static pumping level of the skid, and also snapshot every 15 minutes, which will not only make reports more accurate, but it will allow young culvers to do other things. Stormwater, this year's stormwater project is almost over 20 this week. The park side of it, staff has been doing usual repairs within the parks. Meeting guard is open, dog park is open, it is very busy. First street dance is this weekend, doing for the second. Campol site continues to be very active, lots of people at Campol site. Bullyards are installed, the delivery store and the PD. Staff are gonna need seven people for the maintenance, too. We have one on the dock that got hired and will be released soon.
Awesome. I gotta tell you, Mr. Sylvester, in the short time you've been in this position, you keep impressing me.
All right.
Every, every meeting, we have to sit down here. I'll pick up the guy, officer.
I have a question for you, man.
What's that?
I got a contact from my resident vote, oh, you know, the storm pond maintenance has been on this year.
Yeah.
Been busy dealing with that stuff. Did hold permit that fence put in, they put the fence in, and it was all approved, inspected, everything was fine and dandy, and then started doing the storm pond maintenance, and the city had told her that she had to remove it at their own expense.
Sure.
I just, I just...
Yes.
Bibles have a bird street southwest. I'm just curious how it's, the permit approved.
That was all it takes to find that.
Yeah.
So, so the permit basically says, if you put your fence in easement and we need access to the easement, it is your responsibility to take it out of the way.
Is that, that's what the permit do say now?
Yes.
Okay. So we're strictly doing work in easements?
Yeah.
And these locations just happen to be locations that we needed our access.
I believe that that was added into the language in early 2016, when we were having issues with some fences in storm pond easement areas.
Right.
And they were impeding the water flow, so that was changed back.
I kinda figured that's what the case was, but I wasn't sure.
Sure. And, and the other element is, even if it wasn't in the permit, the ordinance is basically say, if you put something in an easement, then we need to go in there. So even if it wasn't, if she got a permit before the wording got added, it was always in the city ordinance to, you know, apply it that way.
I don't know if, when people pull permits, they probably don't exactly look at ordinance.
Sure, right, and that's why the...
The permit gets approved, and they think they're okay to go ahead.
Right. And, and, you know...
If it's not in the permit language, maybe it's something we should add.
It's in there.
It is there. Been there since 2016.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, and we really did try and minimize how much anybody had to move their fence, like, it was the problems we went, the impact areas we did, just because obviously nobody wants to have to do that, and we don't wanna have to tell them to do it. But in the end, you know, I felt like we got really good buy-in, I guess, from all these people, because they understood that we're actually gonna fix a problem that they have in their backyard.
Right.
And every one of them, in the end, was pretty, pretty happy we were doing it. You know, obviously, they weren't happy that they had to pull their fence out and put it back in, but in the end, every single person did, and, you know, we just finished the work on Monday in these backyards, and I think every, everything I've heard is positive, so...
Didn't have to remove the fence, obviously.
No, no.
This would surprise me, I, I know when Cambridge went through, they had pretty much every other resident.
Yeah, you know, and we did...
It was, but that was the first time they've ever done it.
Right, and that was our, you know, ours as well, you know, that's why there was heaps of settlement that needed to be removed in certain areas, and every one of them, you know, we, we kinda went out of our way to seven, three, five layers of people, you know. People living in person multiple times, pointing out why they have a problem, and, uh.
And probably helped reduce the complaints to.
Yeah, that was a lot, yeah.
And, and council member Jason was willing to go out there and meet with them on their time when they had appointments that they could make, so that was very helpful. Jason came back numerous evenings, and the only phone call that I can recall taking was of the, um, between Dallin and the railroad tracks. People didn't know that that was a storm pond area, thought it was just a wooded area, so that's actually the only one thing that I heard, so it was very positive.
I'll show one of these guys to follow up for you, Councilman Collins, or are you gonna do it, back to the resident?
No, I, I can, I can, yeah, I can follow up this one, thanks.
Any other questions by the council? Again, good job, Mr. Sylvester.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll jump into the mosquito control discussion then. Uh, I call the city of Cambridge, they have three units, they budget ten thousand dollars a year for overtime and chemicals. And Bram has one unit for nine thousand, they budget fifty seven hundred a year for overtime and chemicals. So what you see there for Iceni is kind of like forecast, maybe two units, two people coming in, the overtime coming in once a week, uh, between overtime and, and chemical costs there. We'll say that Bram comes in once for twice a week to spray for mosquitoes out there. I didn't get any contract, the people give me a bid on anything. Um, I do know a private guy that does do mosquito spraying in his yard, he's got a three acre yard, he has four treatments a year, it costs six hundred bucks a year to have his yard treated for mosquitoes. Um, permit regulations, the M P C doesn't require us to have a permit, we're not a big enough city to have a permit. Um, Department of A, it does require us to be, have a licensed applicator do it. Um, in that process, you get a log, how much you're using, when you're putting it down, when the wind conditions are, and stuff like that, through, uh, Department of A. How you would treat it would be driving down the road, party ten miles an hour. Um, there'd be additional stuff, if you wanna spray inside the parks, like Legacy Park, River Bluff, this is just driving down the street, not getting those walking past area. Um, best practice is to treat from sunset to midnight, that's when the adult mosquitoes are, that's when they're most active. Um, the equipment needs are obviously a commercial sprayer, skill containment for the chemicals when they're being stored, I, you know, P P E. Right now, Public Works has one guy that has the mosquito spraying license, the spray mosquito, excuse me, the spray mosquitoes. We have to add five more, the tech twos, it all have to get certified, get the applicator licenses to spray for mosquitoes. Um, and we have to change their job description to make them get that license. One thing I didn't get in here, that I found out last week, last Thursday, talking to Todd Schaub's, it, um, the stuff that Cambridge does spray is hard on aquatic life, and I did a little research this afternoon. Um, there might be something out there, I couldn't find something, but the chemical that's in, that's most active in for spraying mosquitoes is, that's the stuff that's, that's hard on the aquatic life, it's per, permatone or something, yeah, something like that, so.
Correct, cocaine.
Yeah. Perfect, yes. There's, there's other options, we talked earlier, there's, there's some ricketts, you can throw in the water, stormwater pond, you know, you can get those different places. Um, this just kills the adult mosquito, doesn't kill the larvae.
I'm getting a lot of complaints about mosquito spraying in the city.
I brought this up. Forty years ago.
Well.
What did you, what did you, what do you.
Oh, yeah, me.
Make the cost, the budget for, how much?
Well, we look at, you know, looking at this would be twenty four thousand dollars, well, you're probably closer to twenty four, twenty five. You know, let's get guys licenses, probably twenty six.
For the first year?
First year.
And then what after that?
Probably looking at, you know, around four, I'd say, based on this right here, coming in.
Just our first year is gonna be expensive, there's after, it'll start going down dramatically, and, and I think the effects that our residency, I can't enjoy my yard. I mean, I, I visited, uh, a, a friend yesterday, and as I stood in his yard, I got tore up, and he's closer around River Drive.
I, I would do want to add that we are a small department down there, to have guys come in and all wear them on plow and snow, and ask them to come in, you know, once or twice a week, to, from, you know, sunset to midnight. It's, it's wearing on guy, just definitely, I throw that out there. We're not departmentalized, it's six guys do everything, then plus the mechanic, you know.
And, and don't get me wrong, man, I don't wanna overwork you guys, but, uh, maybe on a rotating schedule, I mean, do you see this being feasible at all?
Well, I'm not gonna calculate it.
Mayor and council, I think that if this is something that, uh, you would be interested in, the consensus is for staff to do more work to, I think these are general, um, estimated numbers. I think that we should maybe look into, Mac Nellis, to talk to the guys that in Public Works and see, just because of that small staff, if they're denied vacation in the winter because of snowstorms for plowing, it takes more vacation in the summer, if those are getting denied because we don't have enough people, I just think that maybe that would be helpful to look at if they're like, you know what? The overtime is not even worth it, we wanna have our time in the summer, maybe we wanna look at costs of hiring an additional staff to make up the difference.
Uh, I'd like to see what they think, personally. I, I guess I'd ask the rest of the council, what you think.
I'm gonna say this, and Mayor Johnson knows that, I argued this with him, about the cost, it's gonna be costly.
For sure, yes.
Uh, well, even, no matter what, what I'm gonna tell you right now, I've had many residents come up to me and say, we need to spray for mosquitoes. I said, do you realize it's gonna cost you?
They don't.
How much is it, thirty dollars a month, I'll give it to you right now.
Yeah, they don't care.
I mean, seriously, it's.
My taxes are gonna go, so be it.
Yeah, if it's gonna cost you thirty dollars a month, I'll give it to you right now.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, I put a thermal cell when I go outside, and it works great. But, that's me.
I will, I will add that I've got four guys on staff down there right now, if I had to add another guy, ever, without, yeah, if I had to tell those guys to come and spray mosquitoes once or twice a week for the last two months, might not be as happy, they might be a little more armaried, you know?
Do you have, uh.
Take it to account.
Like, uh, Cambridge does it on rotation, so you may have sprayed one night a month?
See, I was supposed to spray it once a week up there, sometimes twice.
Twice a week, yeah.
On the bed, and you get a lot of complaints.
Yeah, and, uh. But they're on rotation, so.
You went from.
Todd and Jerry and Bill were spraying that week, the next week, most likely they won't, unless the next group of guys pass, Bill or Danny.
So you can have once every three weeks, six guys, two guys per week, once every three weeks.
Yeah, I think we've only gone all three, three times this year.
Which is bad, I've been in Cambridge at night.
And it only came up to me one time, and I had to turn it down because I had other obligations, so, um. Another thing to think of too, is some cities do it whoever's on call that week.
Yeah, that's where, I always got a guy that's gotta come into us because he's on call, so it's always got one.
So you're giving me the idea that this is feasible, man?
It, it's feasible, I, I can tell you it's not feasible.
You can put it on a volunteer basis, even, you have the one guy on call, and he wants to volunteer for the overtime, sure, nobody's bound to jump at that.
Mostly the younger guys in Cambridge.
Yeah.
They'll take it every time.
I, I personally think that's, I think that's something we really need to look into.
I agree.
But, um, part of certification was, um, when I had last looked into two trucks, the only certified person, is you have to have a person certified, and that's only purchased, can't, not that, apply it. Unless something changed in the last six months.
We have, everybody down there is, is certified to spray pesticides. This is in addition to spraying pesticides, so you go renew your license for pesticides, you just sit through another hour and a half, two hours, feel they talk about mosquito spraying there, for then your license renewed, that's good for your pesticide, for your mosquito. Same way for the bird spray, it's, it's just another add-on to your, your core licenses in addition to that.
Right.
And I believe that we've understood it to be that anyone handling the chemical, so not just purchasing, but handling, so if you are holding the sprayer with the chemical in it, you have to dilute it, your license.
I only just.
I don't either.
That's, that's the, that's the least cost, to be honest, to recapture me license, that's, that's the least cost, the initial cost of the big one, right?
Well, you know, I, I'm all for us, getting some hard numbers, moving forward with it.
We, we all agree to move forward with it, see what happens? There you are, Mr. Sylvester, moving forward.
Give us some hard numbers, so we can, you know, talk to the guys.
Yep, I'll talk to them and get some.
And we'll have to figure out how we're gonna do this, how we're gonna do it, somewhere hard, but.
We all appreciate your due diligence, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on to, uh, D four, C S O position and placement within the police department discussion. I added this one, uh, myself, I don't believe code enforcement should be within city hall. I think the police department should handle that, and that's why Chief Myers is present today. Um, I don't really know why it was ever, but in city hall, well, I do know why, but I'm not gonna say. Um, I think what we're looking at is, is this a part-time, full-time position? Uh, it has been budgeted, if I'm correct, Mike, for twenty twenty. Um, Chief Myers, if you wanna add to this at all, feel free. Um, I think we'd have good candidates within our reserve department, or if you were gonna open it up to application, whatever you're, you're thinking. Um, please speak to the council now, sir.
Yeah, it's, um, something we're looking to, we've talked about, obviously, we haven't done it for several years, so it's kind of the implementation of how it's gonna work. If that's the direction the council wants to go, it will work. We'll have to, had to redo it a little bit, because it's gonna be under the police department. But it is feasible, it's something that we can take out as a task.
It's my understanding now, Chief Myers, that if code enforcement was to go out, per se, and give me the old nasty letter for not mowing my lawn, that if I didn't comply to that, then the police department steps in, correct?
Sometimes.
To, to give a fuck.
We do some of the other ordinance violations, there are any, any of our ordinances, and some stuff when it comes to on property violations, that's where the enforcement does deal with. Uh, as far as administrative citations site, our officers are already given the valid form, all of the ordinances except for some of the ones, law year monitor, weeds, and stuff, we don't get involved in as much. But I have to take initial complaints, and our officer will handle, handle them if they see them, so there's already a duplication of resources a little bit.
So essentially, the way this position would work is we don't have to come knocking on your door and say, hey, uh, we need this ordinance taken for, uh, the C, C S O could potentially just do it under your watch.
And you can do it, and then it's, it'll, it'll have a little bit of additional tasks for administrative, uh, support, you know, because there's the administrative side of any enforcement. So it's really hard to gauge where that's gonna lie, because, and some of the other letter tapes, some of the actual enforcement pieces. So that's gonna be a little bit more of additional tasks for, for one point five admin staff doing some clerical pieces of that.
And, and my only worry was if, if the C S O follows under Chief Myers, does Chief Myers report to Ms. Selman? Or does he just do this on his own, I guess, would be a question, maybe for you, Josie, I don't know.
Yeah, Mayor, I think we'd have to look into, um, if there did need to be any code revisions within that nuisance chapter, if it states that, um, anything, and I don't know, she would do, if you know off the top of your head, we could look and see if anything refers back to the community development department, I know that they do some administrative citations already, in-house, and nuisance abatements, as well as run the public hearings for those things. If it has anything, um, tied to that department, we would need to revise those to an ordinance amendment to.
So maybe with the assistance of Ms. Selman, I mean, it would all follow under Chief Myers, but if he had the leniency.
Yeah, we would, we would, we wouldn't have it cross over, we would leave everything into the police department for overseeing, that's Mayor.
So, that was.
Yeah, in our ordinances for, like, the law grass and some of those, uh, underselling administration, it does say so in administrator, so we would have to change those over to police. Um, but right now, the way it works for law grass is you get a notification, which would be the clerical aspect, and then, right now, ours only registered ten rights citations. But I believe depending on how the C S O would do it, they would still give the communication piece, and then they do spray for all two guys. They just do one, you know, same thing, just to.
And then, uh, I'd also understand that maybe we did start this part-time, and if we did start it part-time, it's only gonna grow within the police department.
Correct, I think that conversations in, in life is just position description pieces, you know, right now, it's a position description as a code enforcement officer, which is a little bit different than some other agencies use as a community service officer, which utilizes many service officer for ancillary law enforcement practices, for non-sporic law enforcement activities, so there's some things to look at that.
However, I mean, we could pay a cop this very large hourly wage to run records or blood tests or things in a criminal aspect, or we could use a C S O that's costing us essentially ten dollars plus an hour.
Correct, and that's what they're utilized for, is in ancillary stuff, where they're sitting on toes, or doing some of the shared stuff, but, as we talked before, that position description now is code enforcement, so we have to look at how that would play out, adding those additional tasks onto code enforcement to incorporate some of those ancillary law enforcement tasks.
Finally point, gentlemen, is if we put code enforcement in the, the police department as a C S O, it's gonna grow from there. And we're essentially, the police department can utilize a C S O, code enforcement can utilize a C S O, and really in the end of the game, we're saving money. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. finance director.
Place to start, and, once we, it's gonna take a little bit of time to figure out how to do the code enforcement side within the police department, and in the future, that can grow into some of those ancillary tasks as well.
And it's essentially a resident within the city of Iceni, or somebody that wants to pursue their law enforcement career, or who knows, maybe one of the reserves wanna step up and take that job. I mean, we have a lot of good ones.
You're right.
So, I mean, that's, it's an opportunity, so that was my suggestion, I don't know what you fellows are thinking, but, uh, uh.
So Mayor and council, just so I, um, get the consensus, is it, is it to start off being part-time, because Mike will start working on, um, moving those budgetary numbers.
I think.
From the C V D over to the police department, and he just needs to know how it's going to be for the twenty twenty preliminary budget discussions.
Do we wanna start this off part-time? Are you thinking that they can go to full, or, uh, I think, I don't think you disagree with me in saying we should start out small, because it can grow from there, we don't wanna go backwards.
Correct, I think it'd be easier to start up part-time, focusing mostly, like, transferring code enforcement into that position, and seeing how that works, and then in the future, and work into that community service officer pieces, which is doing the ancillary law enforcement movies on top of them, so we have to first get that code enforcement.
Get it rolling.
Get it rolling, get it working, so we can figure that out.
And we can, we can go forward and up from there, instead of going backwards if we made it forward.
It'd be a, it'd be a strong leap to jump a hundred percent in to do both of those.
I agree.
I agree, I, I concur, I think that's what we should do.
So, we, anybody have any objections? Any discussion, anything?
No, it sounds reasonable, the chief, as far as he, he thinks this is doable, so, yeah.
And this will come before council for approval of a new job description, and some of those ordinance changes and things like that prior to the start of twenty twenty, in hopes.
We'll just get the ball rolling, so in January twenty twenty, yes, we're over to the police department.
Right around there, yep.
Sounds good. Awesome, moving on to D five, extended hours for city hall, Ms. Wood.
All right, so, um, staff was asked to look into how we could better, um, serve some of our residents in offering some earlier times and some later times. So what staff did, and I talked to all of our staff and got their opinions, and what I'm recommending, um, well, myself and Katie Brooks, is that we extend two days per week in the morning and at night, so in sort of eight to four thirty on Tuesday, Thursdays, we would be open seven to five thirty, offering that ability for residents to come in, whether before work or after work. Um, with that change, we're also asking that we have some flexibility with staff, and we already do have some positions that work for ten hour days, and, uh, asking council to give us the flexibility to have that with other staff if they so choose to have, work a four-ten shift. Um, it would be upon myself to make sure that I'm monitoring schedules, to make sure that all department heads are not taking the same Fridays off. Um, I've already, I took a hold of everybody, and some people are not interested in having Fridays off, so I think we'll have a really great balance, but also offering that flexibility, and as we've had some other discussions, offering some flexibility does allow for better retention of good employees, which we definitely wanna have, now that we're fully staffed and have some really great people on board. Um, so I'm just looking for what council thinks of these, these hours, and this would be year-round, not just for in the summer, so we think that would be in the best interest for, you know, builders that may come in to talk to Sheila or other staff, and just have that couple days with longer hours.
I think this was brought up because Councilman Lundine and myself talked about, we didn't wanna burn out our staff. And right now, these guys are working teeth and bone. And right now, these guys are working teeth and bullet. I mean, we're not that big of a city. And we're asking them to squeeze orange juice out of lemons, you know, it just doesn't happen. But they're making it happen, so I think with giving them a little more leeway, our retention will be, and our morale, and God only knows what else would skyrocket. I appreciate each and every one of these people that are sitting in this room, and I know you guys do. So that's what we, we asked Josie to see what she could find out, and boy, did she do her homework.
I, we did pull a lot of other cities, so Katie did a lot of work, and as well as some of her staff, to pull a lot of other cities. I think she had somewhere around like 24 or so. And a lot of those other cities have short or off on Fridays during the summer. But I wanna make sure that we're giving the best service that we can, because we're obviously, this is what we're here for, is our residents and making sure that they have availability. And if they want or need to pay their water bill on a Friday, we don't wanna move the date. We wanna make sure that we're available for them.
Right, Thursday, Tuesday, Thursdays, would.
We could, but I mean, if the deadline is typically on a Friday to pull that or to pay that. And then we also have that added benefit of giving some flexibility to staff, which seemed like that was in a great interest to you, which staff greatly appreciates.
I do see Ms. Brooks's name on this email, so my apologies. I'm giving all the credit to Ms. Wood. So thank you, Ms. Brooks.
You're taking it.
You wish to take it.
I'm all for it. If that's, if you're making it work, and I had mentioned to you, Ms. Wood, that, you know, I just didn't wanna see the City Hall not open on Friday when people, you know, you're here for convenience, and if all of a sudden, okay, maybe noon, somebody's trying to get in on Friday afternoon, you know.
And I appreciate you working around that, and I think that was huge, so.
In my sense, I'm all for it. I don't know what the rest of you feel.
Any other council members' questions, comments, concerns?
Sounds good.
You okay for it?
I think it was a good idea.
All right.
Josie has your policy in the city, so if Josie thinks it's gonna work, I trust her with judgment.
That's what I like to hear, Councilmember.
Thank you very much. And this will go to council on July 2nd for formal approval, and then we'll work to switch. We do have a lot of publications that are in need of being revised, so it's actually a really great timing for those. And then we'll switch the door and the website and all those things after the 2nd of July.
Sounds good to me. Moving on to D6, flags lowering to half-staff, current policy to be discussed. And I can tell you, fellows, where this stemmed off of. It was a resident complaint that I received when we had the Virginia Beach shooting, where 12 people, I believe it was, were gunned down by a coworker that either was fired or resigned, and then ended up gunning them down. The president ordered everybody at half-staff, and then the governor did, and I got an email saying, why isn't the city of Iscany at half-staff? I didn't know this policy yet, I'll be honest. So of course, I reached out to Matt Sylvester, and he's like, no, public works don't do that, the police department does. So then I reached out to Chief Myers. And Chief Myers got the job done and went and lowered him, but Chief Myers actually has a lot. I shouldn't say a lot, but you covered your bases, so if you wanna touch base on this too, Chief Myers, take it away.
All right, Mayor Johnson, council, like I said, it was approached by the mayor to reiterate what we're doing. If you look at the attachment to that, there's five days in a resolution back in 2015 that we raise, as far as the police department, the word raise those flags on those days, which does make sense, because the police department is the 24-hour, seven-day-a-week employees within the city, so we have the resource to do it. Try to do it at sunrise and sunset. Sometimes call load, it might not quite meet that sunrise sunset, but we'll get it done. Just looking at last, in 2018, the presidential proclamations was 67 dates where it was raised, or lowered half-staff dates. I didn't go into what the governor of Minnesota did, so there'd be some additional dates on top of those 67. So that's more than once a week where there is a presidential proclamation to raise the, lower these flags. You know, the five loring of the flags that we have from the, you know, 15 resolution are very doable, more doable, but I was surprised to see that there was.
What are those dates, Chief Myers, do you know?
It's on there. It's Peace House Memorial Day on May 15th, Memorial Day. Patriot Day, September 11th, Pearl Harbor Day on December 7th, and the fallen firefighter Memorial Day, the last Sunday in September.
Am I blind? I'm not seeing.
It's on that page.
Oh, there, so they're there. So those are the ones that are in the original resolution from 2015 that we've been applying to. With that resolution, it also gives authority to the mayor to direct any other dates outside of those five. So if something else comes up, the mayor can direct those flags to be at half-staff. So that's where it is currently. We'll just bring it to council that this is what we're under, so that you guys can discuss and see if that works and change that.
And now that I know this policy case, I'm okay with this. I think 67-plus dates is kinda crazy.
I agree. I think if you do it, if you're doing it once a week, that's not even special anymore.
No.
There should be something that means something.
Yeah. And, I mean, if, for instance, Councilman Carlson wants to call me and say, hey, do you think we should raise or lower it on this date? We can talk about that, you know. I'm not gonna just pull the trigger and say, oh. I mean, I did this one time, because this kid was taking pictures and sending them to me, and I'm sending them to Chief Myers. You know, both of us are like, well, what do we do? I don't know, let's just lower them.
But that narrative was a problem, and I don't know if we discussed it when it was gone. The governor did not declare it illegal.
He did.
He declared it, but he didn't, he declared it on his Facebook thing. He didn't declare it as an emergency. So for that to have happened was kind of.
Silly.
Silly.
Yeah.
But, you know, I guess, you know, if there is something that's declared, then obviously we have to do it, but I agree, I think, you know, we'll cover the dates, and then when that other time arises, when it's legally done, and declaration of it, and let's move forward.
I mean, I look at, I look at it as always a team up here. So I mean, if you were to call me and say, hey, do you think we should lower or raise the flags on this date, and here's why, you know, I don't know. I'll tell you what, I'll have Ms. Wood reach out to every council member and see what they think, because I can't do it, because that would be a violation, so. But I could definitely do that. I'm willing to do that. I'm not gonna pull the trigger just on my own thought. Because if that was the case, everything military and police would be done, and.
So we're not under obligation?
No, sir, we are not.
But we are when the governor.
We are not even, we are local government, Councilman Burgley. We're not state. No.
But he just didn't do it legally when he did. That was the problem. He just put on his.
He went on his Facebook, he tweeted it out.
He tweeted it out, and he didn't notify anybody of it. And this gentleman took offense to the city not having it done. It was.
Correct.
It's a silly matter. It's too bad. You know, we probably should have done it, but at risk, he would have just, the governor would have notified it to proper channels.
It did legally.
I gotta say, we should or we shouldn't. I'm just wondering, when to decide who followed it, who to decide.
Me.
Mm-hmm. So Mayor Johnson, council, so with the presidential proclamation, he's proclaiming that the federal buildings are lowered, and the governors are operating, but the state buildings are lowered. So those are what the, those two proclamations would reference. So in essence, the follow suit, it would be why the mayor has the authority here, kind of follow suit.
Because we're local government versus federal or state. So, I mean, and I'm willing to say, hey, you know, yeah, I'm the one that regulates that, but I'm willing to say, you know, Councilman Burgley, if you feel like the flag should be raised or lowered on this event, I'll go to Ms. Wood. I'll have a track with the rest of the council. If we're good with it, we'll do it. I'm not gonna make that decision myself.
Is there a way you can communicate with the public or? It's a lot of people sometimes don't know why the flags are at half-mast, and they're pretty curious.
I agree. Maybe we should put that on our Facebook?
We definitely, Mayor, council, we definitely could put that on our Facebook when the mayor put up in the proclamation board that we're going to also do that, or those dates that we have, so they are aware. We can definitely start utilizing social media tonight.
I think we should.
And I think if the governor does declare it, he does it on the proper channels. I don't think we should even question it at that point. It just gets done, but he needs to notify us through proper channels.
Yeah, and that, Councilmember Lundine, that would be then for the mayor to watch, to monitor that, as staff does not, and then he can inform me or go directly to Chief Myers.
I agree.
Anybody have any objection? Anything in the discussion concerned, anything else? No, moving forward. D7, discussion regarding legal services.
All right, Mayor, council, I was asked to put this on the agenda, but then we also, staff worked on putting together a draft RFP if the council was interested in moving forward to go out for proposals for both the city attorney and services and prosecuting attorney services. So staff is just looking for discussion and consensus on whether we obtain and continue on with Mr. Clark Jocelyn, or if the city council is interested in, like I said, going out with proposals. Currently, we do not have a contract with Park Jocelyn. He's appointed as our city attorney every year. So there would be nothing to per se terminate. However, staff would suggest that we do have a crossover. Should the council be looking to go out for proposals, and we do choose a new attorney service, that we have some overlap. So no one gets lost in the mix, depending on what projects are in the book.
Any discussion on this matter, gentlemen? Otherwise, I'm gonna speak once again.
I haven't seen a problem with going off on this. Second that.
I'll third it.
I mean, we should actually do that more frequently.
I agree.
It's typical with our other contracted services and public engineering. We have engineering, Boldemain do it every five years. We have re-upped with Boldemain, because they offer fantastic services. However, it's not always a bad idea just to review it. This year, we did not go over RFPs, but we did make sure that we had, they gave us a proposal.
Do we review our legal services yearly or five years or anything of that sort?
It is to be reviewed annually, and it has just kind of been a rollover, if there's no concerns or no issues. But there's no contractual agreement that we re-up, so to say, every year, but it is reviewed, or, you know, thought of in the beginning of every year. If the consensus is to move forward, staff would put this RFP on the July 2nd city council meeting for approval, and then staff are both through the process of putting that out for bids, and then we would review them at an upcoming committee at the whole. And council could then review what proposals came in.
Any objections, discussing, discussion, concerns?
So why did this come out now?
I'll be the, I'll be the guy that, obviously, this came over the 2017 incident that I'm sure you're aware of.
No, I don't.
Okay, okay. And then when I was elected, I brought the same concern to our city attorney, and he also told me there was nothing to worry about, and I, I knew different. So I and, and when I kind of gave him that look of, are you serious? You don't think there's concern? At the time, Don Lawrenceon was still the city administrator, and God bless him for saying, I think we need a second opinion. So when we went out to our labor attorney, not one, but two attorneys within that same law firm hooked it and said it was a huge problem. Since then, Ms. Wood, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Myers, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you two have also went to him on legal matters, and he's tried to either push you off to our labor attorney, or he's fumbled the issue. Forty years is a long time for a man to be here, and I appreciate everything that he's done. But I would think with the city that, even if I wasn't sitting up on this council, or even the mayor, I would wanna go-getter for an attorney within my city.
And I guess, you know, and also, the news media is done. I don't think we have a lot of choice.
It's pretty damning with the media's tone.
That's, I guess that's where I'm taking issue with this, is if you, if we bend over every time a station comes out here and says something bad, I mean.
Which isn't often.
Well, no, I'm not saying it is, but what I am saying is, one of the papers took issue with it, wrote an editorial. If we go out and do legal services now, we're gonna get beat up over this, I think, in the paper. And I'm not saying, I'm not saying that's not a good, I'm not saying that's a good reason to not do something. But I think that as a, as a council, we should come out with our own report saying, just review the 2017, 18 personnel records. They must have, there must be records on what they talked about, isn't there? I mean, every committee keeps records on everything. If there's not records, then you gotta question the people that were down those committees that.
Councilwoman Burgley, just to address that, to let you know and the council know, in our previous committees that we had, the Development Operations Advisor Committee, which was DAC, finance and personnel, there were not minutes kept in those meetings.
Because of?
I believe at the time, it was not thought of as violating any open meeting law, however, upon clerk reviewing that, it was because of open case laws and reviewing what should be open meeting law were violated or not, because it's a difficult subject, I think, to meander through, depending on if the committee is making a decision or if they're giving guidance, if they're actually making decisions. Then you should, you should have it open, and you should have meetings, meeting minutes, and you should also have it open to the public, but if you're not, it's giving guidance. So there was a lot of things to meander through, and that is ultimately why we have committed the whole today in not those, because they were found out.
I just find that very interesting. Every committee keeps records of their meetings, except for a personnel committee?
No, it was possible my predecessor, you know, might fumble that.
Well, I'm not gonna blame anybody, but here's, here's my whole complaint of the whole situation. So Channel 5 comes out with a report, and the guy from the county Star Chase issued with him, and there's some things that he said. There's some things that he said that were true, and there's probably some things that he said that weren't true.
He's also a personal friend, though.
I don't, I don't doubt that, but, you know, rumors flew around that whole incident. And all of a sudden, we started hacking employees or services, or however you're gonna put what our city attorney is, without us saying what our reason is for this. Everybody's gonna question us. The paper's gonna question us. I think we should just review the whole thing and come out with a reason why we're doing this. Let's be honest with people.
I just did.
No, I'm saying.
He's fumbled not only legal matters on my part, but he's the chief's part, the city administrator's part. He's fumbled on left and right.
Well, I don't know if I use the word fumbling for a lot of things, but having me go to.
To a labor attorney that it has nothing to do with.
Well, where this is gonna come back to is, that gentleman's gonna write up saying, saying stuff about us, saying that we just bent over it and took it in the shorts because Channel 5.
And that's not the sole reason, Councilman.
No, I'm not saying this is the sole reason, but that's.
Channel 5 made it look like he was the only one that knew.
Yeah.
They did.
I'm saying, I'm saying this is gonna be all public perception.
Which is not fair.
I'm not saying it's true. I'm not saying it's true that, that the public perception is right, but I'm telling you, we're gonna take a hit. We're gonna take, people are, you know, it's gonna, it's not gonna look good on this council.
It could hit either way. Yeah, you're gonna take it either way.
No, not if we, not if we come out with an opinion on our own, saying we investigated this on our own. We consider review records, we consider.
They take more money.
Well, we could do it on our own. We don't need, you know.
I don't know what you, you know, just the Burgley, but I'm telling you, and all I've had, a lot of people have approached me and said, what are you doing wrong?
I'll second that.
And I've had, I've had, I've even had attorneys from in the area contacting me, what are you guys gonna do about this?
I've received emails, as well as Ms. Wood.
And it's not, and that's the perception of our constituents and our citizens of this town that say it needs to be changed.
I'm not saying we shouldn't do any. I'm not even saying we should reduce the time. I'm saying, what I'm saying to you, it's gonna be a public basis nightmare if we just cut it without, without explanation.
Well.
Well, obviously, there's a minute extension. It could come down to we follow this legal services that prices are cheaper.
There you go.
I mean, it could come down to.
Well, you can say that, I'll say, but I'm still saying there's people that are gonna question.
I think they're always gonna question us, always.
I'm saying this is gonna be bigger, not just because of Channel.
No.
Just because of, just because of that guy rating out.
We're gonna have half a dozen of one, and a dozen of another, and we're always gonna have some.
I think we'll get more, we'll get more people complaining that we didn't do.
And again, I'm not saying we shouldn't do anything. That's not my point. My point is, I think we should have a, I think we should come out with the absolute reason why. The absolute reason why is because.
We should.
But our, I mean, our, I would be considered right here with Ms. Schwartz, because she does a lot of PR work.
Correct.
She's in, she's in charge of that.
Yeah, but we take a hit, too. A few people are asking us questions. People, I've heard it both ways here, you know.
I just don't.
And I told you why we haven't been getting bids on other legal services for 40 years.
For 40 years.
Mr. Bergman, can you interject? I think that it is unique for a city to have the same attorney for as long as we have and not have reviewed those services. We have contracts with many other different providers for contracted services, whether it be refuse, engineering, other labor attorney, we have EDA attorneys. It's unique that we have had one city attorney for so long and that can come at a great advantage, but it also, I think, can hinder us from getting other perspectives. I know there have been times where it would be helpful for myself to seek advice from other attorneys, which I've done so through the league and they've been very helpful. And having different perspectives is of an advantage for staff.
So I think we're getting me wrong here, I'm not even saying maintain what we've got, I'm not even saying don't explore further options. What I'm saying is that I think the public wants to know what exactly did happen. Okay, so the chief of police gone, now the city attorney's gone. The public's going to know what really happened in this situation and I think they deserve to know.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
Okay, well then what are you going to do? I mean, I think, I think we should review whatever records are there and then say, this person did wrong, this person did wrong, we could even, you know, we don't have to go with an expensive media for us to do this.
There's a lot of data privacy, personnel information.
Former employees.
Former employees. There's a lot there that we are treading very, very icy water.
Okay, well, you're probably right and I don't know those things, but I think we should, in my opinion, I'm just telling you...
There's nothing more than I want to be transparent to the community in the city of Ixanny, but there's a lot of legalities that we could get ourselves into if we didn't do it correctly.
And the reason, I mean, and councilmember, the reason why we cannot explore some of those things that you're alluding to is also because of client attorney privilege, things, things that other previous council members or, yes, council members have spoken to with the other attorneys in regards to personnel matters can't be discussed publicly. So there's a lot of that that is entailed in this. I guess I'll just leave it, in the essence of time, we do need to move on, but I do think that it is best practice to go out and seek other opinions and just see what else is out there to compare. If the city council chooses to stay with who we currently have, that is their choice, but I think it is best practice to also look out above and beyond, or not above and beyond, but just out there to see what else.
We're not disagreeing to look above and beyond and if I have to talk to you later.
So if the consensus is to move forward, our, our, maybe we can have further discussion at the council meeting when we put that on there if we would like, but I, I do feel that, we'll just move on because I think what you're alluding to and we can't discuss a lot of those things, so...
Okay, let's move on with exploring.
Okay.
Moving on to the eight council members' audio/video equipment.
All right, so we have had a lot of issues over a number of years with different equipment within the council chambers, some you probably know about, some you don't. Kind of in a nutshell, basically what happens is we're not able to audio record things, we're having difficulty just with uploading, some of the things like onto the YouTube, which we want to make sure we do. You've all experienced presentations that don't come through your monitors and we have to have the cable going up to the front and those are really just kind of easy things to see. We've had wiring redone, we've had the lights redone, we've had a lot of different things within that room that it really is a jungle up mess back there to get that to function. What most people think is everything's functioning very well, but it's really not. Staff puts for a lot of work to try to get things to operate and wiggling toggles is one of them. So what staff has recommended for you guys for discussion is to look at redoing the AD system. I've met with a number of vendors, I think that we have some great vendors to choose from. I did not provide the proposals today because I can bring that to council when we choose that this is the best bid for us to do. Currently, this project is within the 2020 budget. However, I think that it would be very difficult for us to limp what we have without putting more money into the system that we have to get us another six months out of what we have. So I tried to put in worst-case scenario, the vendors that I spoke to, besides the current vendor that had originally installed this equipment, is that we're not going to build up what you have because some thirteen-years-old of wiring isn't best to just work with, they would redo it and we'd have an entire new AD system.
So they pull out all the new wire, or all the old wiring, put all new wiring in and all new equipment?
Right. Some of the things like the monitors, I'm like, we'll dispose of that to try to keep the cost down, but we're looking at up to $65,000 and we're going away from the projector and going more into that new age technology, we've been into the city council chambers of Cambridge. There are more TV monitors that typically are put in and we can get discussion, we can discuss those at a later time, we look at proposals and what exactly the council wants. However, what I'm looking for today is, do we want to move forward? We can use funds that we have allocated in 2020 by shifting that from this year, which was the capital replacement fund, or does the council want staff to try to limp what we have until next year?
This was, correct me if I'm wrong, that's how we discussed this a few years back when we were going to look at getting this to done already once and what happened to that?
This has gone to finance committee at least a couple times, if I recall correctly, but it hasn't made the final cut into the budget that went to get approved by council kind of shifting down and staff has just been kind of replacing things to limp it along. So it's been discussed, but that's where we...
What I was told by previous finance committee personnel that used to sit up here, both of them, that we're doing this.
Yeah.
All right. I don't see us putting any more money into this, I mean, I've ten years since I've been watching this thing, fumbled through everything, you guys spending an hour trying to get this to work. My opinion, let's move forward, get this thing straight out of any doubt of this because this was supposed to have been resolved three or four years ago.
I don't disagree with that, I don't think we should limp. If, if our finance director thinks this is feasible to get done sooner the better, then I'm on board. Anybody else need discussion?
It's a lot of money, I mean...
It is, but...
It'll last another fourteen years, it's almost $200 a meeting, that's pretty spendy.
If you are here to see this, these people that limp this equipment...
I've heard, I've heard stories.
The mic to your far right doesn't even work anymore. These monitors haven't worked since I've been elected.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe once.
But like I said, the people that were on the finance committee before kept assuring that we were going to get this fixed because they were very frustrated with it and then once kept throwing it out there. So, and I was told it was supposed to have been done. Like I said, we can't keep operating where we are.
Wireless mic, so when councilman Burgley leans away, you know, you always hear, you know, have you heard?
Just so you know...
We actually will now have, on the dice, have wireless mics, but the new mics pick up from very far away, unlike these ones.
I was going to say that in the Cambridge fire department, their training room, they have a smart board that's unbelievable, you can do with that, with other monitors, you can use it for a dry erase board.
So you're saying you can circle here, that'll show up there?
No, you do that up there, down there, but you can do it with pumps, you don't have to be up there.
Oh, I thought you were like the weatherman board where we could lock up.
Yeah.
And I did talk to the vendors about that, that is not included in this money because, you know, that does get more expensive, but the nice thing of upgrading, upgrading our technology is that we can add those things in down the road. It also will fix our issue with having the noise that stay within as, you know, that we've had, so we'll actually have white noise that'll go out into the hallway, so kind of some of those more we need to be on show.
We can actually have call sections in here.
I think if you go up to the school district, you could probably get one of the smart boards that they took, if you even know and they quit using them, you could probably get one pretty cheap. I mean, seriously, they took them all out of there and they're sitting in the closet.
Have you ever been in the county chambers in Cambridge? They have a sleek system, I'm sure it costs a lot of money, which I don't want Ixanny to pay for.
In the essence of time, we're going to move on and if the consensus is, this will be brought back to, sorry, this will be brought back to council in July for full discussion with also the proposals, you know, chat about more specifics if you'd like.
Sounds good.
Sounds good to me, sounds good.
We would like.
We would like. Moving on to D9, bid opening results for recommendation on the T-65 Codruma Street R-Cut improvements, Mr. Cook.
So this is the, the rebid of the, the R-Cut improvement, as you recall, we got zero bids the first time. This time, we opened bids June 11th and did receive four bids. They range from 791,000 to 1.1 million. The original budgeted amount for this project was approximately $112,000 less than the bid, so it's above the anticipated amount from back when we did the original studies, those ice reports from two years ago, with the rate that the construction prices have been climbing and the possible continued risk of that. I guess just that upfront, you know, the recommendation would be if we have the available funds, I would recommend awarding to this amount, but since it is above the budgeted amount, we essentially have three options to do. That first one would be the award, that would lock in the, the MINDOT committed funds, which would still be over half of the project cost. The, the second option would be to try and rebid again in January. There's a possibility that we would get a better bid, but there's also the risk that we could lose even these bidders because of either frustration, they see we've already rejected the price that they put together.
But we wouldn't lose that state money though, right?
We would not lose the state money, that would still be available for it, but if the bids came in, you know, higher, they'd be higher and then we'd have to decide at that time.
Who was the bidder that came in late in the first?
That was also this little bidder, Asper. So this is their basically second time bidding this project, they just didn't manage to get it there the first time. So I guess that's the situation.
They missed third about canceling the project, but I don't, I don't much like that one myself.
So, so we chose to cancel it, that would eliminate the, the MINDOT funds permanently. They've also expressed concern with the city just deciding to drop the project that they have also worked pretty heavily on and got those funding, you know, that funding to the city. But, you know, from here, it's basically a finance thing, so I guess, I don't know if we want...
I see number one.
What was the reasoning for, for doing the project in the first place? I mean, you guys probably... It's the R-Cuts, if you've been down in like Ham Lake or East Bethel, they have those like G hooks.
But the reason is, is because of the tolls, and it's, there's been numerous accidents at Codruma.
Has it? To save the issue at the intersection.
Yeah, there's a, there's a delay, especially during rush hour time for stacking of vehicles trying to do that maneuver where they would cut across traffic.
Most of them were slow there.
And so this...
And businesses in the area are all begging for something safer to happen.
We asked for a lane, but they gave us that.
And I think that would be ridiculous. These G hooks, they don't work a little better. My question is, do we award the bid or do we wait until January? We still have the state funding, but costs could go up or stay the same. I don't think they're going to go down.
Because we said we're ready to go down this summer, didn't we?
Yeah, but however, let's keep this in mind now because the issue of a stoplight coming in at dual and five, where QuickTrip is, I'm actually making some pretty good leeway with.
I just, I don't think, I don't see...
If we give, if we...
How does that affect Codruma?
Because if we give this money to the Codruma project, then, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, if we give this to the Codruma project, then we have to scramble at how we're going to pay for that five project.
Yeah, over the years, we've been collecting traffic light fees, right, on different development projects and right now, we're sitting at $360,000 in that fund, that is for this type of project. Now, if need be, we can find another $100,000, but once that money goes into this R-Cut project, if in two months or two years, we have an opportunity to do something at the QuickTrip intersection, that money's not left and we won't be able to put back $360,000 overnight, it will, it will take time. It's been years to get to this point.
How much is county putting in for that?
We don't know yet because I'm still, literally, I'm, we have, the county is doing a study right now at that intersection and then, yes, today and tomorrow, and then they're supposed to get back to me at the end of the week or the beginning of next week to let us know what's feasible, what it's going to cost, of, you know, of that sort, and then we'll know more information. And the only thing that I'm, I don't think we need to say, let's not do this project at all, but I, if I could buy more time, I guess is where I would lay, or lean.
The only thing I've got to say is the construction costs are going to go up anywhere from three to eight percent. I'm not going to say now in January, three to eight percent on that, on $800,000 is a lot of money and you don't realize that every month there's an increase on fuel costs, every month.
When fuel goes up, construction costs go up.
Yep. And bring out fuel.
Pressure that.
I'd say get the 65 project done, I mean, I appreciate all the work you're doing out here because that needs a tune, but...
We also got to look at it as a safety concern, how many more accidents are at QuickTrip compared to...
We've had four in one week in front of QuickTrip.
Are they at sixty, highly 65 speeds or?
Probably not, no.
Yeah, I would think deadly accidents are going down the highway.
I think Chief Myers could, could, you know, back me up on saying, I've seen accidents that have happened at 30 miles an hour where somebody died more so than somebody at 65.
Yeah, we have not had any personal injury accidents yet.
Not yet, not there yet. I've seen it.
The mechanism of injury at 65 is different than 30, but the magnitude of accidents of traffic, that's a whole other concern, so what's the priority of who are traveling, you know, that, that other issue they have, five, and we're working with that is pedestrian issues that that used to...
That's another issue.
Heritage, that's a huge concern that we're working with, we haven't had any issues with it, but that's something we're looking at.
The only thing is, is what I'm stating is, state funding, no matter if we weigh it and this thing goes up five to eight percent in January, we're still getting the state funding, which I get, but we're still going to have to put that much more money back into the project, which means that's going to be that much money less for QuickTrip. So it's, it's a double advocate here.
I agree.
It's an up or down. We don't even know if the county's even, but it's smart, I hope they are, the goal with QuickTrip stoplight, but it ain't going to happen in the next year. They don't move very fast there either. So I, I, I think the Codruma intersection is going to be far more important at this moment and I don't disagree, we need lights at QuickTrip, I definitely agree with that, but I think our costs are going to outweigh the cost, but that project waiting is going to outweigh the cost of the lights at QuickTrip. Construction costs are ridiculous, I would be dead if there's a crazy construction happening.
I'm just looking for opinions gentlemen, so I...
I'm trying to remember, I mean, on the fire department, one of the accidents and I, I'm trying to remember the last time there was one, I've only been on a year and a half and I don't remember one at Codruma there, you know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong on that in the daytime, I, I mean, we don't obviously get paid out for daytime and else there, but I don't care to call anything in the last year, I mean, there's been quite a few good ones, you know, past five years, a couple years ago, there was a boat sitting there falling.
Falling. That was really...
Further, yeah, it was walking further and it was sitting in the middle of the road.
So is the consensus to move forward, if that's why we still...
I've heard, I believe, Councilman Collison, you're saying go forward with this?
Yeah, I think it, catch more, yeah, keep them on 65, I think it's...
Councilman Lundin is saying the same thing, you two fellows have anything to add?
No, I, I said one.
So he's, that's the majority, so...
Councilmember, are you doing, you're in favor of Codruma?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we can certainly move forward with, you know, these guys, these guys have more knowledge on it than I think I do, so, yeah, I think it's, it sounds like a good idea.
I mean, I, I brought up traffic issues for running goals and it's still a big issue, but if we have to decide one or the other, at this time, I think our highway speeds is more dangerous than, someone waiting to turn left to go to a bank or whatever.
Yeah, Mr. Burgley, Collison and myself, from the minute QuickTrip was going through here, we all said the same thing, there's going to have to be lights there, but we do not know what the county's going to do. They may come back, they may say they're talking nice with you, they may say, yeah, we need to look at this, but it's not going to happen overnight.
At the same rate?
You said the same thing.
Yeah, didn't say that, but when it comes down the pipe that it shocks you and they say that they're going to, then we have no money to do it, so it doesn't matter.
So Mayor, Council...
Let's go, let's keep, let's move on here.
Yeah, moving forward, so we'll decide and we'll go on to...
Go forward.
...with our bid along with the funding, additional funding. Okay.
Correct. D10, request to waive fees related to water disconnection. Mike, you care to cover this one?
Yeah, so this was a resident request, they had a...
Yeah, so this was a resident request, they had water disconnected. They had satisfied most of their delinquent balance, but they were a little less than two dollars short of the number that they needed to hit. And they were disconnected, and they incurred a hundred and fifteen dollars in fees associated with that, and they're looking for those fees to be, to be waived.
And what's where they, they under-
So you get to keep, you get to maintain your current balance, right? But the, but the delinquent portion is the amount that needed to be satisfied. So it was that delinquent portion that-
How many months, how many months were they late, though?
Originally, I think, I'm trying to remember their exact billing history, there probably would have been three and change.
So three months late, and they paid it.
And they had satisfied almost all of it, but did not satisfy the full-
Two dollars and eighty?
Two dollars and eighty, that's where it was.
And then ended up accruing a hundred dollar late fee.
Well, the late, the actual hundred dollar fee is for a fifty dollar disconnect and a fifty dollar reconnect, because public works has to go out there and physically turn it off, turn it on. It's not a late fee. It's a disconnect, connect charge.
So that it's disconnected right now?
No, they've since, they've gotten back on.
But now they're looking for a refund. And I will keep in mind, if we set the precedent and said we're gonna do this for this one, then we're gonna keep doing it.
Were they unaware it was only, I mean, three dollars more to?
We would mail a letter to everybody so that they understand the amount that needs to be paid and the timeline and where it needs to be paid, right? And they need to be in City Hall. And, and they also get a door posting prior that provides the same instruction.
And I think they were emailed too, were they not?
Our utility clerk did go above and beyond and also email, which, which I've advised is maybe not the, the best course of action, but nonetheless.
But they have three notices that they were given.
And they, they were, in, in the end, they paid it, but they were short like two dollars and one cent eighty cents.
Yeah.
And that's why they went on.
Shut it off.
Because they were short two dollars and eighty cents.
Correct. They just went, they just borrowed two dollars and eighty cents for, and saved the money of sending our guy over there, spending ten dollars for his time to go shut it off. All right, game, two dollars.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, residents, but-
But at the same time, now, now, are we gonna say that we're gonna, Mr. Gordon here is short five dollars, so we're gonna, we're gonna waive that fee. Oh, you're short five dollars, so we gotta waive that. You're, you're within a five dollar limit or a ten dollar limit, or?
Right, I just don't understand why, what, no, five dollars and eighty cents more.
There's, there's, in years of, of disconnecting and managing utilities, there's not always gonna be a good explanation on that. I mean, it's just how that is gonna work. This is gonna happen from time to time. My, my concern would be is that if we say, all right, anybody who's, who's within five dollars or ten dollars, now the next person is gonna say, well, I was two dollars from that mark, I'm seven dollars or twelve, and then that mark just slides. And you, you basically are always going to have this issue at whatever benchmark we set.
Oh, what's the policy say? When do you, at what point do you go and disconnect it?
So they would have, they would have till four o'clock on Friday, they'd have payment in City Hall, and then the following.
For that month?
After being three months behind.
Three months behind.
Yeah, they, yeah, they send the delinquent balance, yes. So you're-
So if I'm a month behind, if I'm all up to date on my water bill, and I go in and pay it a day late?
You're disconnected.
No.
No, no. I might misunderstand what he's saying.
No, I'm, I'm wondering, what's the policy say? Do you wait till they're three months in delinquent before you actually go and shut them up, shut it off?
Oh, I see what he's saying.
I'll tell them they can shut off after the second month.
It depends on the time of year. In the winter, we don't because of safety and welfare issues, so we don't disconnect, and that kinda keeps, if they didn't pay all winter long, it kinda keeps going. I could look in the code for exactly what that day is for the beginning of the cutoff of that season. But when it comes to the delinquent charges, their doors are posted. They do have the availability, or the ability to call City Hall and find out, like, how, how far am I behind? What do I need to get to pay up my account to not be shut off on Monday? That is available, and their doors are posted. That is a service that had gone through committee a number of years ago that they wanted to maintain, because that comes at a cost as well, to have public works go door to door like that. But we wanted to make sure that we were informing our residents that we want to give you a second chance, that you didn't notice that you were delinquent, we wanna help you know that.
I was just, I was just curious.
There's, yeah, there's no question that, and I do know this individual, and she's a sweet lady, but there's no doubt in my mind that she knew.
It wasn't just a mistake on the job.
She knew. And I feel for her, and I do, but-
Then you can also turn around and say, well, I was two dollars short, but never been this, last month, sorry, I was only a month behind. I mean, there's-
Catch, catch what you do.
I would, I would say waive it. I'd be more than okay.
What's your thought, Mr. Berkeley?
I testified once for a little girl that was having radiation poisoning because of smart meters and, and it was a seventy-five dollar fee every month to come out and read the meter if they didn't install it. And I'm really disappointed that we couldn't be small townish, and I don't know if they could raise the whole fee, but maybe a partial one. We are small town, why can't we do something?
I mean, I agree with you, I don't wanna set a precedent, but we're talking-
It was over three dollars. I mean, that's, and I get, I get exactly what Mr. Johnson was saying, but it's just-
I have a hard time understanding why she was just short at three dollars. If plus it was too good a bike to fake. I, I'm not saying it's warmer enough. Obviously, you guys do.
My recommendation is if we are looking for an answer to find that out, perhaps then we invite her to talk on her behalf of why she was short the two dollars and eighty some cents, if that makes a difference. Otherwise, we will-
I should create an invite.
If the consensus is to waive it, that would need to go to council, or to refund, I should say, that would be done.
She was informed.
It would need to go to council. But then I would wanna make sure that we, staff has direction, because if it is, every request should still come here, if that is what we choose to do, because there will be more that will come, because this is not the only or first time.
Yeah.
But.
You know, and if it was three hundred dollars?
That's different.
I'd get, I'd totally say, no, absolutely not. For three dollars. You could've said, I'm gonna give you one day, let's get it done. You know, I mean, being fair on our, on our point, but again, if you have, you know, you have a TV cable or satellite, whatever, I guarantee you three dollars short or shut you off.
Correct.
How do you think you start your late fee?
Which they won't hear, if you like, you didn't shut you off.
And then they charge you not only a disconnect or reconnect.
Yep.
So it's the same way. It doesn't matter if it's a dollar, it doesn't matter if it's fifty cents, it doesn't matter if it's ten dollars, doesn't matter if it's three, you're disconnected and reconnected, you pay the fees.
Mayor, we tried to make sure that we're treating people fairly, and to treat people fairly in that kind of regard, we do look at it black and white. What does it say within our policy or the code? Because if you start interpreting it different, depending on the story, the circumstance, then we're not treating people fair, because we automatically have human bias for each one of us, and I may determine it differently, what's a good excuse versus what Mike could. So that's why on, on these types of things, it's, it's black and white for us. So if council is looking to waive it, we would send that to council, or reverse, refund it, I'm sorry. We'd send it to council, but then maybe we will need guidance, are we just doing it for this one, because they took it to this far? Or are we going to look at it philosophically across board, changing our policy?
I, I, I personally would say leave it as is, but-
I mean, is she an elderly lady? That's why I'm kidding, that maybe she wrote to check out Ron by accident? I mean, is that possible? I don't, I don't know this person.
I don't either.
She's not young, which she's not.
In the essence of time, should we have-
She's Councilman Berkeley's age.
We do, the request, the request to come through our finance director, but we could have the request and go to council. Do you wanna hear on behalf of this person have to go to council to make a formal request?
I, I, I guess, I don't, I don't, in my opinion, no. I mean, she's, you know, she had three months, right?
Correct. It is, it is, it is an ordinance, let's keep that in mind right now.
You're right.
It's in black and white. And like Councilman Lundeen said, if it was a cable bill, we would shut off.
My, my concern is, you know, is, is being the primary staff in charge of this aspect of, of city services, I would really rather not be in a position to have to exercise discretion on whether or not somebody should or should not get turned off on this. Eventually, if I'm put in that situation, eventually, somebody either on the council or in this town is going to say, how did you know that person? Did that person give you money to keep their utilities on? Are they a family member? Are they a friend? And unfortunately, whether any of that is true, perception will be reality, and now I am tarnished permanently.
I agree.
I would rather not be in that situation. If we wanna waive fees, I will absolutely get on board with that, but I want clear direction that doesn't leave me having to make a discretionary call on a case by case basis.
I would say we don't. It's in black and white.
The more, I don't know, step, the more I hear.
Yeah, I would have dropped that, if you please step, I would ask for-
That's exactly what we're doing.
So I wouldn't have either.
So, so we just wanna leave it as is? Don't waive nothing? Any, you still sticking with your same thought, Council?
I mean, I understand your, I don't disagree with him, but yeah, I don't also.
So come-
It turns out to be, but I understand.
So everybody swayed to just leaving it, except for Councilman Gordon, but I would-
I'm not swayed. I'm not swayed, but I just think that, like you said, it's-
The majority of the-
Correct.
So the majority of the council is just saying?
And I'll leave with this, and then we'll move on to our budget discussion, is should we wanna review exactly what we have, what's written down within city code?
Can do that.
Water shut offs, turn ons, all those different days that we schedule. We do review that every year, annually. So Councilman Gordon, if you wanna review those fees that are attached with such tasks that we do with those services, we can review it then. So we'll move on to the budget part.
Mike, you wanna take over on the D-11 2020 budget, sir?
Yeah, so the budget that you have in front of us is, I understand we've got fifteen minutes or less here in order to be prepared for the council meeting. I'll go quickly and kinda hit the high level stuff. I will start by saying, if there are any council members that want to ask specific questions, please do. If you wanna come visit me in my office, you want emails, phone call, whatever, about any specifics in the budget, or, you know, a very broad discussion, not even about specifics, please let me know, don't, don't hesitate. Understand also, this is a, this is a committee review. We do have two budget workshops, an option for a third, before we even get to the point of setting the preliminary levy in September and the final budget in December, so we're very early in the process. The budget in front of you is a culmination of meetings with department heads. This is strictly meant to be the starting point to give us a perspective on where we're at. The very first page is a new presentation. This is a document that I put together when I first got to Yanty. This is not something I've shared with the committee as a whole or the council before, but I think it's great information that gives a good high level overview of where we're at. On that page, you can see the estimated market value trends, and midway down in bold print, you see the various levies that make up our total levy for the city. General fund levy is only in place, but we have now two additional levies that I'm proposing here. One is was at the direction of the council here in the committee as a whole in May, which is a street construction levy, right? This is the, this is money that would go directly to fund four twenty-five and fund those future street construction projects. We also have a capital maintenance and replacement levy, that would be money that would go directly to fund nine twenty. This would fund that twenty-year capital maintenance plan. You see five years of that in this, in this budget document at the end. And I've run the numbers on that, not just twenty years, but actually up to twenty fifty-six. The threshold on that plan being is that so long as it actually cash flows, you have a successful plan there. We also have an EDA levy, the impairment levy needs to be reported, but it functions like the general fund levy. Total proposed levy at this time is just shy of three million, and leaves us at a tax rate of about sixty-seven percent. That is about one and a half percent below the, below the average from twenty, from two thousand four to two thousand nineteen. So it's an upward departure from, from the current budget year, but let's leave this below the historical average.
Any questions, comments, concerns, sir, Mr. Becker?
This is a concern for Mr. Bechavek. This may be one of those items that we step away from our, our greenness and, and have a hard time reading.
Just lay it flat. If you lay it flat, of course, Councilman Lundeen is trying to tell me if you lay it flat in terms of it works, but I reckon-
I don't, I still have to read.
It's locked, and so it wants to, so go just top one, little green screen.
We'll have to give Councilman Berkeley a session here of, I mean, it's my hat.
Me too.
Yeah, as I said, have we got some-
I guess, I guess, Mike, I've said it a million times, and I'll say it a million times over, that you are fantastic at what you do. I feel humified every time you enter the room. You, you're good at what you do. So as long as we're not in the red, and you're not waving your arms saying, council, this is an issue, I think you're doing a fantastic job, sir, so keep clunking away.
He's got a couple other points that he wants to share as well.
Well, we don't wanna hear them. I'm kidding, go ahead.
With regard to the general fund budget, as it sits right now, there will be absolutely some things that are gonna change. Again, we're in June, and we're gonna set this thing final in December, right? So there're gonna be some things that change. One of the big wild cards would be what health insurance renewal is. That's always a big deal every single year, but we are not gonna know that until about a week before the September preliminary meeting. I'll be well prepared for that, I'll be a part of the discussions at the co-op that sets the formula for that renewal. But this plan does have us right now with about sixty-two thousand of excess in the general fund, which is a cushion for now. We could certainly just eat that up by lowering the tax rate, or we could just leave it at place. But it does also put back about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of fund balance as well, which is also something that we need to be doing at a steady pace here over the next few years to build that back up. Part of the reason that we've got this, these two new levies for capital maintenance and street reconstruction is to help that fund balance. If we take that money in, directly into the general fund, and then transfer it out, we've artificially floated our expenditures and hurt our fund balance. If we simply just put it straight into those construction funds, we get an automatic bump in our fund balance. So that's, it's kind of a accounting quirk, but it, it works well to help us move that fund balance in the correct direction. Yeah, there's a, there's a lot that we could go over, but with ten minutes, I'm gonna try to think of what is behind.
Well, I, I think what you got going here is right direction.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's not a matter of wanting to, it's a matter of needing to.
Yeah, I guess, maybe wrap this up, because I don't wanna go right up to seven here. What I would say is, is I'm very comfortable with this plan in large part, because for the first time, we're actually to a point where we actually have a list of all of our future capital maintenance and replacement needs. We actually have funding for our street projects identified in going in place. We actually have a capital maintenance plan that funds everything from windows in City Hall to a new roof on the, on the police department building, new police vehicles, a new loader, where we'd actually pay cash in twenty twenty-seven, we wouldn't be borrowing that money, that money will actually be there. A large part of, of setting a levy is knowing that the levy that you're setting is actually the correct levy. And at this point now, we've got enough information in place to be able to say that, yeah, this is, this is the right place to be.
Whatever happened with street lighting, Mike?
So street lighting, my understanding was is that the last, twenty nineteen was So street lighting, my understanding was, is that the last, the twenty nineteen was the last year of the, you know, kind of infill, um, project, um, and that we didn't have any immediate needs on the street lighting. Going forward, the ongoing, uh, additions to or replacement of existing street lighting would move Fund nine twenty.
Okay.
We also, when we did that, uh, we, uh, worked on the change in the requirements for new developments for lighting districts.
Yeah, okay, okay.
But we still, but we should go back to urban, there's still, you know, some recalls and recalls, and part of the way you used to live on some of those cul-de-sacs, even though it wasn't in it, it's pretty damn good.
Yeah, and this is, you know, it's also to understand, it's, while we've got the twenty year plan that covers all the general fund maintenance and capital improvements that we have, you know, actually, I'd say twenty years, but I've extended it farther than that. It also covers water, sewer, um, stormwater, all of these items, and while this is the first year and it's a good plan, I, I would remind council, it will not be a great plan until the third iteration. In my experience, that's just how it goes. I promise you that in two summers, Matt Sylvester will be driving down to the State Fair, and something will dawn on him, and he will not believe he could've left that off the list. But that is what will happen, but when we get to that third iteration, where we are gonna have a list that is really tight, and it's really complete.
That brings up my question, Mike, um, you said, you know, this has been a good budget, including everything in the list, that type of thing. But we always have those items where for, um, unexpected items coming, do we have something built in, or?
Yeah, so this is, yeah, I'll go to bring that up. So this is part of, in the past, all capital improvements have been funded, is, is, there would generally be a levy or a tax rate that was identified, and then the excess money that was available is what would go toward capital improvements. By putting all the capital improvements into Fund nine twenty, and funding in a consistent annual amount, when something comes up, we can simply spend out of that bucket and move other items back and forth on that schedule, without drastically changing the cash flow from year to year. So this plan gives you the opportunity to fund everything you're aware of, but when something comes up, it gives you a significant measure of flexibility, so that if you spend, say, a hundred and forty thousand dollars that you had planned on, if you're low cash point and that capital improvements plan is seven years out, now you get to spread that hundred and forty thousand dollars out over the next seven years. So your adjustment in future levies is pretty small, relatively speaking, so it gives you a lot of flexibility.
That's right. Any other, uh, anything else you need to cover, Mr. Becker? Mr. Becker has said that his door is always open to any gentlemen, so don't hesitate to call, make an appointment with him, and come and see him. Any other questions, comments, concerns by the council?
Motion to adjourn.
Really? Oh.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion from Councilman Berkeley to adjourn, and a second by Councilman Lundin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, therefore, we stand adjourned.